The agenda and at this time is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Madam President, this is Trustee Schindler, so moved.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Trustee Schindler. Is there support for this motion?
Madam President, before we have stopped it, it's amended agenda, right? Or no?
Uh, it was amended before the board meeting.
Okay, all right. Vice President Lee?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Schindler, supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to achievements, awards, and recognition. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Zachary Ross to introduce our guest for this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam President. We know that in the past, before the pandemic, we had guests to come for our our buildings came for our points of pride. And this tradition will begin again today. I'm starting with Holmes Elementary School. We have our building, yay! Our building principal, Principal Greg Anglin, will be leading. His students and staff are here. He will introduce them to share Holmes Elementary Schools' Points of Pride for 2022-23. Welcome, Principal Anglin.
All right, thank you. We're certainly glad to be here. I'm Greg Anglin. I'm principal of Holmes Elementary. And as Dr. Zachary Ross stated, we have some students and staff members. So students, come on up. All right, so we have fourth grade student Kathy Runk. We have fifth grade student Aria Carter. And we have fifth grade student Paris Lewis, who are going to be supporting, reading our points of pride. And we also have some staff members here for support. We have Jamie LaGo, who will be assisting, and we have Debbie Swanson here, supporting her fifth grade students. All right. So for our points of pride, our first point of pride is support for our families. Holmes is always there to support our community in whatever way we can. Holmes provides food options for families in need by offering perishable and non-perishable items from our food pantry located in our building. We also provide weekly food boxes from food gatherers to support our community.
Creating student leaders. The Student Leadership Program facilitated by Holmes teacher Dylan Browns allowed fourth and fifth graders, fifth grade students to develop skills in collaboration, community support, and leadership. The Student Leadership Program focused on keeping our community clean and brainstormed ideas to make improvements to our school. All student leadership participants entered the essay improvements to our, oh, I'm sorry. Contest for aspiring educators of Michigan in Holmes Fifth Grade. Student Lamir McGuire was chosen as one of the essay contest winners.
Our third point of pride is collaboration with the community and community partners. Holmes is grateful for many community partnerships we have to support our students and families. Organizations such as the Ann Arbor Links, Family Learning Institute, Children's Literacy Network, Eastern Michigan University, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, to name a few, all have been great collaborators and have supported our students. We are very proud of cultivating these collaborations to help meet the needs of our students.
All right, point of pride number four, a caring and collaborative staff. Our staff is connected and focused on increasing student achievement through providing staff-led and relevant professional learning opportunities, collaboration through our building network team and grade-level teams, and utilizing collaborative learning cycles. The Holmes staff continues to work together to provide the best learning experiences to increase achievement of our students. Additionally, Holmes is proud of our caring and responsive staff that creates a safe and nurturing learning environment where students have the opportunity to excel. Students and families have commented on the high level of support and care that is provided at Holmes. As we like to say, there's no place like Holmes.
Five, well-rounded students. We have excellent students that we have students that are not only focused on accelerating academically, but our students are also excel in extracurricular activities. Our students have placed in Lego Verbal competitions. Holmes was the past spring's flag football runner-up. And we are the man up, kid down reigning champion, basketball champions. We have been that.
Six, Holmes is partnering with YCS facilities and grounds, Washtenaw County Water Resources Commissioner's Office, and the Southeast Michigan Stewardship Coalition to create a one-acre prairie on our school grounds. This prairie is designed to create an outdoor educational space that promotes learning and nurtures an ecosystem that supports native plants and other living organisms. Created the prairie is the first phase of the Holmes Outdoor Community Gather Space Initiative. Hello, my name is Kathy Runk. I'm in the fourth grade in Miss Gray's room at Holmes Elementary. We hold our GIZI gatherings where we take the opportunity to celebrate our students' achievements and accomplishments. We celebrate and recognize students' attendance, students' academic achievements, and recognize our students for supporting our positive school culture. Also during our daily morning announcements, we shout out students and classes for demonstrating our vision of developing young confident scholars.
All right, and thank you. So those are the Holmes Seven Points of Pride. Thank you. And I want to thank the families for supporting, getting their students here. We certainly appreciate you all. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anglin, and thank you to our parents. Thank you to our staff. And thank you to these exceptional scholars at Holmes Elementary. Let's give them all another round of applause. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Zachary Ross for the Member of Michigan Teacher Leadership Collaborative presentation.
Thank you so much, Madam President. This year, the Michigan Teacher Leadership Collaborative presented recognition throughout Michigan. They named twenty highly effective equity-focused educators from across our state. And Ypsilanti Community Schools is the home of one of these educators, Rashonda Miller of Perry Early Learning Center and Erickson was recognized from Education Trust Midwest and Teach Plus. They named this person as a highly select, and this is a highly selective teacher leadership collaborative, where educators, they share their expertise around equity-focused instructional practices. They deepen their knowledge of education policy, and they gain a voice in decisions that affect historically underserved students and the teaching profession. And so we're very proud of this member of our YCS community. Ms. Miller has received this distinguished honor. She makes our community schools great just every day. We know that we have greatness within our staff every day. Anyway, it didn't take this group to tell us about her. She just has this quiet spirit that just is in our buildings all the time, day in and day out. We are ready, celebrate, and just acknowledge her. Her quiet spirit that just supports our students, supports the staff. We're just excited. The other people acknowledge it beyond the walls of YCS. So we'd like for her to come stand so that we can acknowledge her publicly. Ms. Rashonda Miller. We know, that's why I said quiet spirit. We know, we know that, again, she's not, you won't see her standing up outwardly demonstrating, like, she won't be that voice, but behind the scene, she's just like that duck. She's paddling, she's out there extending herself. She's always just pitching in everywhere, just everywhere. In buildings and committees, just doing anything, not even, she doesn't have to be asked. She doesn't have to be asked. She doesn't have to be acknowledged. And I know she's probably so embarrassed right now. And being named part of the Michigan Teacher Leadership Collaborative is a pretty big deal. So congratulations to you. You don't want to say any?
That's exceptional. And Ms. Miller, while you're standing up here, I cannot help but say, while you're here, how much dedication and commitment you have shown to this district. You have taught all three of my children. And like, so I'm speaking firsthand now. It's just, I mean, you are a warm and quiet demander. And you just exemplify excellence in everything that you do. So congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Dr. Zachary Ross?
Thank you again to some other unsung heroes. And I'm glad, I know there's a couple that are in their unit here, and I'm glad Mr. Rose is going to be able to present today because our custodial staff, and they're just a part of a great, big operations and facilities, and they just named specifically the custodians. But I just hope the whole operations and facilities here this today. This is, October 2nd was National Custodian Day. And oftentimes, we get, you know, we've got the national school, I'm just gonna say to all of it right now. We have National Custodian Day, National School, Bus Safety Week, National Principals Week, Principals Month, and, you know, we have just exceptional staff. And so I feel like, starting off with the one that says National Custodian Day, is so important that we recognize, especially during these times. We've been talking about the pandemic. We've been talking about, you know, people were concerned about this year, starting off with monkeypox, and we've been through so many more. Like, people talked about, what are you gonna do with school? We have flu season, we have so many things that are happening that we think about health and safety of our students first. We can't learn without the health and safety of our schools and our students. And so our custodians are our first-line defenders. Operations and maintenance are first line. And so we just appreciate them. They're the ones day in and day out. And so really thinking about the fact that that these folks started, they said here, 2019, they became just known as those first-line folks. And so we just want to thank thank them for their hard work, to show appreciation for our custodians at work and at school, making sure that they keep things tidy, making sure that they keep things safe. We want to thank them for the work. We honor them, we respect them, we value them for the contributions that they make day in and day out. They're the ones firsthand, making sure that everything is clean before everybody gets in. And they're the ones when everybody leaves, when we leave out tonight, making sure everything is clean again before we walk in tomorrow morning. And so we just want to thank them and recognize them on this National Custodian Day here in October. So let us give a round of applause for our custodians, for all that they do. Next, Madam President.
Yep, several, so go ahead.
Yep, National School Bus Safety Week. You know, we talk about when the runs are slow, when there's the incidents that happen. I told our Transportation Department to think about how many miles did they drive every day? How many safe runs, stops that they do, pickups that they do? How many hours did they drop off and pick up? How many children do we deliver safely every day? We don't talk about the numbers. Like, if we put that into hours, numbers of people that we deliver and safely route daily, we put that into numbers. I said, we need to put that on T-shirts. Route it daily, route it hourly, route it per year, safely delivered this many thousands of children a year. That number is a number that I want to be able to roll off of my tongue. Because the number of children that get home daily, safely, every, per year, is astounding. Because that number compared to the number that don't get home, is like ninety-nine percent. And we don't shout that to the mountaintops. And that's all, that's what this is about. National School Bus Safety Week. And so let us, at this point, we want to acknowledge, and that's everybody in transportation, that's the monitors, the drivers. Because we transport medically fragile students every year. And every year, they get to school safe. They come home safe. Every year, every year. And so to our drivers, to our transportation staff, to our monitors, to those nurses that ride, to all of those, we just say thank you for what you do. We take it for granted. Most times, they get up early in the morning. They get home late at night, and they do it every day, even in the rain, sleet, snow, they get up. And they get them there. And so for those who do that service on the third, fourth week in October, we recognize them for the National School Bus Safety Week. So let us congratulate and say thank you to all of them. And lastly, I know, you know, we think about the building principals, and they're that middle level. That middle level, I know we have Mr. Stone here today, Assistant Principal at the high school. The principals are the one, you know, when you're that person at the building, that one administrator running the building, everybody is looking to you for that answer. And the one who is the administrator in the building, where teachers, parents, students, that custodian, everybody needs the answer to that one person. And that's a big responsibility for that one person. And that is one of the hardest jobs, to have to make decisions on the spot. And so I believe that that job has to be recognized, and it needs to be honored and respected. Because that is where that closest to that student next to that teacher in the classroom. And so in YCS, we really honor our building administrators and know what a difference those persons make in our buildings, in our communities. Our communities truly value our building administrators. And so this is National Principals Month, and we just say thank you to our building administrators for all that they do. They truly make a difference in Ypsilanti Community Schools. And so our board has a resolution that, that I know later in the agenda, our board has, I believe, is there, yes, for our board in the next action item that our board has to ask to pass so that they can approve the National Principals Month Resolution as presented. And so we just honor and respect those. And so thank you for all the work our principals do day in and day out. So thank you, principals, for what you do in YCS. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Zachary Ross, and thank you, everyone, for being here. I just want to say again, a huge thanks to Ms. Miller for the honor of the Michigan Teacher Leadership Collaborative recognition. To our custodians, I couldn't have said anything else, but they are such important parts of our community here at YCS. Our National School Bus Safety Week, acknowledging our bus drivers. And I just want to say a thank you to our parents, too, for entrusting your children with our, not only with entrusting us with your care of our students for their academic and educational needs, but also entrusting us with the care of your students for your transportation needs. We don't take that lightly. And I really appreciate, Dr. Zachary Ross, that you lifted up the fact that we don't celebrate enough the safe numbers, right? The number of children, day in and day out, that get home safely, because often we talk about the incidents or the one or two, you know, incidents that happen throughout the year. So I really appreciate you highlighting, because that is important. And whatever that number is, I want to know it, too. So that we can talk about that, you know, and sharing the good news of YCS, because that's important. And our principals do an amazing job as the building leaders. So without further ado, and before we take a motion to approve the resolution, I would like to invite a board member to read the resolution.
Madam President, I'll read it.
Thank you, Trustee Townsend.
Resolution to celebrate our building leaders, National Principals Month, October 2022, Ypsilanti Community Schools, Michigan. A meeting of the Board of Education of the District was held at 1885 Packard Road, Ypsilanti, Michigan, in a professional development room for the Ypsilanti Community Schools located in Ypsilanti, Michigan, 48197 on the 10th day of October 2022 at 6:30 PM. The meeting was called to order by Celeste Hawkins, President. The following, do I need to read that part? Whereas National Principals Month is a month-long event that occurs each October, where school leaders are in the spotlight for their endless commitment to being a principal. National Principal Month devotes the month of October to thank principals for all they do. And we celebrate these heroes of education and honor our school principals for their significant impact on the success and well-being of students. And, three, principals are visionaries who lead us in providing the best possible education to future generations, and we thank these school leaders for all they do. And, number four, an important part to ensuring that the students of Ypsilanti Community Schools can fulfill the potential of a bright future is providing students with a rigorous and well-rounded education. And, five, principals set the academic tone for their schools, and it is their vision, dedication, and determination that provide the mobilization force for student achievement success. The effort of our school leaders is tireless in the pursuit of excellence in education. And, six, principals are a vital part of our students' education as they set the academic tone for their schools by working collaboratively with teachers and staff to build high academic standards, set performance goals, and utilize best practices for achieving those goals. And, seven, a secret to student success is a well-run school, and the key to that is a great principal. From leadership to teacher evaluations to student discipline, and more, school leaders have an important role. And, eight, principals are leaders who work tirelessly to ensure the success and well-being of each student in our learning community. And, nine, great schools have great school leaders. Being resolved that the Board of Education of Ypsilanti Community Schools encourages parents, guardians, and our community to learn more about the contribution of our school principals and the roles they play in ensuring every child has access to a high-quality education in a safe, supportive environment.
Thank you, Trustee Townsend. Would you like to make the motion?
Trustee Townsend, I move that the Board of Education approves the National Principals Month Resolution as presented.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Trustee Townsend. Is there support for this motion? Supported by Trustee Fields. Thank you. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, board. And let's give, we had four, make sure I counted them correctly, four, including Holmes Elementary, that makes five, achievements, awards, and recognition. Let's give all this an applause. Next, that takes us to our first presentation for this evening. And at this time, I would like to invite our financial audit reporters to come and present. And Dr. Zachary Ross, would you like to introduce?
Thank you. I'll ask Ms. Nyad to join. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President and the board members. Today we have Tim Crosson from Yo and Yo to present our annual audit.
Thank you, Priya. My name's Tim. I'm a senior manager. I started working with Priya this summer on your audit. You've probably seen out here previously Brian Dixon. He's the principal on this audit, but he was booked at another board meeting tonight. So he was booked at another board meeting tonight. So I'm here and he is elsewhere. But we appreciate having Yo and Yo out here again. I just want to thank Priya before I forget, and her team for getting us here tonight. Auditors are disruptive. We interrupt her a lot and stop her from getting other work done. So thank you for helping get us the work papers and the things we need to be here tonight. So we met with the finance committee last week, last Wednesday or Thursday. We went over the financial statements in depth with them. And we should have you the final copies in the next few days. We don't expect any significant changes. But these are the results of the 2022 audit. So I am going to start at the top, procedures. So like, what do the auditors do? We look at your internal controls, your procedures. Do you have them? Are you following them? Risk assessment, so we can't audit everything, so we have to consider things that are significant risks and develop procedures for that. We look at some of your documents, payroll, invoices, kind of an asset liability approach, what should be on your balance sheet, what should be payable, what should be receivable at year-end. And then we have unpredictability. So if the auditors do the same thing every year, we're not really auditing anymore. We've got to have some elements of surprise in there. And then finally, peer review. So this is where the auditors get audited. Another CPA firm comes out, and they look through our files and make sure we're doing the things we say we're doing. And the end result there is, for Ypsilanti schools, we have three reports that we're going to discuss. The financial statements, the single audit report, or your audit of federal awards, and then required communications with the board is our comment letter. So the summary of the financial statements is an unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance you can get. It's sometimes called an unqualified opinion or a clean opinion, and that's been the norm out here since we've been involved with Ypsilanti schools. So that's a really good thing. And I'm briefly going to go over the financial statements, and I mean very briefly, because I've got them in here, a couple of slides. I'm going to mostly focus on general fund. And then next to it is a debt fund, which just by their size are considered major funds. And then your non-major fund includes your special revenue funds, like cafeteria, another debt fund, and your sinking fund. So your assets are comprised mostly of cash, and you're due from other governments. So your accounts receivable for S or Title I and state aid. And then your liabilities, eleven point seven million, are mostly your state aid note, which is short-term borrowing and your accrued payroll. And this is your income statement. And this is your income statement, revenues and expense. And this does look a lot different than last year. So you've got a lot of federal uh, awards this year. Uh, I think you were about twenty-eight million in total federal awards, which is a big increase from last year. So in general fund, that seventy-seven point nine million of revenue, about twenty-five million of that is federal money. And that's compared to last year. That was about nine million dollars in federal money. So a really big increase caused by S R three and S R two primarily. And then you've got a lot of reimbursement grants. So your revenue went up a lot. Your expense is gonna go up a lot. And so that seventy-five million was a lot less, just like revenue last year, because of those uh, reimbursement grants. And that gives you revenue less expense of an increase in general fund of two point one million dollars. So budgeting is really important in schools and governments. You're, you're held to the budget. What you budget is what you're supposed to spend. And so you could see here your final budget versus your actual for general fund. So you spent less than what your final budget was, eighty-four million versus seventy, I'm sorry, eighty-three million is the expense for seventy-five million. And so that's good in total, but we also have to look at the function. So instruction, support, business office, that's what M D E holds you to, is do you spend within your budget uh, by function? And we did not have any material budget overages by function, and that's a really good thing. And I'll mention that again in a few slides. And then so compare this year to last year. So this is your revenue and expense, very summarized from twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-one. Uh, so it's a six percent change, which is um, a little misleading. So last year, you had an infrequent transaction called a bond refunding, where you got new debt to pay off old debt for be- better interest rate primarily. So that was about ten million dollars. So if you back that out of those seventy-three million and the seventy-one million, it really shows the increase in revenue you had uh, due to S R three and S R two. That's actually about a twenty-four, twenty-five percent increase if you back out that debt refunding from twenty twenty-one. So general revenue, uh, this is where the money comes from. So just like every school, you've got uh, pretty much the, the same composition of sources. So state aid makes up the biggest part of your income, about forty-three percent. Local is your property taxes primarily. That's about seventeen percent of your income. And then we've got the inter-district. That's just your county, your I S D revenue, and their programs of about six point three million or eight percent. And then your federal revenue this year is twenty-four million dollars. That's thirty-two percent. And that was thirteen percent last year. So that really shows uh, the big increase caused by S R. So the last slide is where the money came from. This is where the money goes. So salaries and employee benefits uh, by far make up your biggest part of your expenses. And uh, you could also include purchase services in there. There's a lot of people costs in your purchase services. If you're using edgey staff or substitutes or anything like that, that's gonna be captured in that, that red slice of the pie. So uh, those two, the salaries and employee benefits combined, that's about sixty-four percent of your expense. And again, you could probably increase that a lot, too. Uh, about sixteen percent of that purchase services is gonna be some of your people costs, too. So uh, the rest is made up of some debt service, some debt uh, principal and interest payments, and then some of your other uh, expenses related to supplies, materials. So fund balance, it's very important uh, number for general fund in school districts. Uh, you cannot have a deficit. And so monitoring fund balance is uh, always an important concern in school budgets. So this year, you maintained about your fund balance last year. So you could see a couple of years ago, your seven point seven percent fund balance. You're now at about uh, eleven point eight percent. And so you're still below peer. M D E recommends fifteen percent, but you're close to that fifteen percent. All right, some of the uh, our single audit report. Uh, so uh, this is included uh, on the second document that we typically publish, the single audit report. It says financial statements at the top, but it is uh, reporting on internal controls over the financial statements. And so we have the O R S contributions. And so you wanna make sure that what you are uh, reporting as payroll is gonna be reported and accurate up to O R S, because they're calculating uh, the, the pension obligations. And this was better than last year. We do take a sample of these and recalculate them. But just because of the amount of retirement, uh, the dollars that'll go along with that, we have it here as a material weakness. But what I do wanna point out here is this was a longer list last year. So there's a couple of things we removed. One of those is material audit adjustments. And the other was material budget overages. So I said I'd mention that again. And so there were some more minor budget overages, but none that we would consider material. So those are two big improvement points from twenty twenty-one's audit. So federal awards, uh, this is missing uh, the Emergency Connectivity Fund. So there is actually four major programs this year. Uh, Special Education, sometimes called IDEA, and then uh, S R is the Supporting Education. Uh, or I'm sorry, that was SEEK in the middle, and then S R is the one at the top, the Education Stabilization Fund. But there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies over that. So that is a really good thing. And then governance letter. Uh, my intent wasn't to go over all these, because a few of these were on here last year. These are some areas uh, to consider for improvement. Make sure you're following laws the best you can, and just trying to be efficient. Uh, outstanding checks, for example. I just wanna make sure that you monitor those and try to remit those to the state if you cannot uh, get those cleared. And then there were no material audit adjustments, but uh, there has to be a slightly more timely year in closing. There's still some adjustments that uh, were made after we got a trial balance, and there are some immaterial ones we found. None, again, that we think are material, but again, room for improvement. Fixed asset tracking, I'm not gonna go through the list. I said I wouldn't. I'm just gonna go over a few of them. Uh, fixed asset tracking, you are using a spreadsheet, and you've got a lot of fixed assets, a lot of buildings, a lot of equipment, a lot of improvements to those buildings. And it's, might be okay to do that in Excel, but there are software out there that might be more efficient, more accurate, and again, eliminate uh, some potential for uh, misstatement or error. And that brings me to the end of the presentation. Again, we appreciate you having Yo and Yo out here as your auditors again. Uh, it's, I think, our third year out here. It's my first year working with Priya, but uh, I, again, I really wanna thank you and your team for, for getting us out here in early October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Ms. Nyet?
I appreciate the board's support. We have worked hard. I still see that there is one, and we will work this year and will make sure we take care of that as well, to have a nice clean audit.
Well, this is a clean audit. I think he said that at the beginning. And this is a testament to your hard work and that of the team, the leadership. Um, we have significantly improved as the years have gone on. Um, and it's especially, I think, noteworthy. We talked about this in the subcommittee meeting, that with the influx of federal grants, and then to have all those federal grants, I think, I don't know what page it's on, but there was nothing. That, that's not like a technical audit term, but that's all I could think of. Um, there was nothing. No material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies, no material non-compliance identified. That is major when you have this much in federal grant awards. So that is huge. Everything about this is huge. Trustee Gaisley, I don't know if you wanna say anything as the chair of the uh, subcommittee, um, but outstanding work. Thank you, Ms. Nyet.
Don't have a lot of other than tackle that. We did have our, our Operations and Finance Committee and, you know, went over all of this. And um, you know, I, I know that, that um, well, I'm just so thankful for Priya and her entire team, um, and, and how much, uh, you know, each, you know, each time there's been some sort of finding, they've worked really hard to address it. And um, we're just like so close to having that perfect audit. Um, but you know, obviously seeing that we're representing it, and also just to see where our financials are, the fact that we've, you know, appropriately managed those federal grants, that we've brought in those S R funds and, and used all of them in the way that they are intended to be used, which is for our students, which is really exciting. So thank you so much, Priya.
Any board question? Thank you. Dr. Zachary Ross, I know that we have two additional presentations, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this next one is a very short presentate, presentation by Dr. Lopez. It's another one that has been added at the last minute. It has to be on by October thirtieth. Um, it is the ninety-eight C Learning Loss Prevention Plan. It is another way to get additional funding. We have to apply for it by October thirtieth. And so thank you, Board, for allowing us to add this at um, the last moment. You'll see quickly, it is, again, very brief, be- because, again, if we want to apply for this ninety-eight C Learning Loss Plan um, that allows us to uh, use this uh, funding for support, um, you'll see it's very similar to the things you saw last month when we added for the ninety-eight B. So you won't, if we get money, you'll see what we'll use it for. We have to present it. They have to have it on the agenda. Um, and uh, Priya will add this to the mixed grant, this presentation, so that they can see it was presented to the board. Dr. Lopez.
Good evening, Board President and Board Trustees. Um, as you have in front of you, you, you received the document for me uh, titled the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Y C S ninety-eight C Learning Loss Plan. Uh, what I wanna talk about is that you've seen this before. I've presented several times. We started the retreat and the board retreat, as well as a couple of more board meetings. I've gone through this document. What I want to show you right now, if you look up here, is that to be out, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three ninety-eight C Learning Loss Plan um, is what was, is required to be able to get some funding from this, from the state. And the, this is just, we're receiving information, just as I was sitting over there, I received some to the point where, what, what they're talking about at this moment is like thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents minimum for student or fifty dollars per student times the amount of students you have. So it's a significant amount, amount of money for the district. What this money would do is to develop, you know, for us to work on the Learning Loss Prevention Plan that we have. So if you see in the red what it says there, this funding can be used to support plans that are already in place. And since we have a comprehensive plan, as I, we demonstrated you to, to during the retreat, all the interventions, the high dosage tutoring, et cetera. So all of that is indicated within this um, document that you receive. Um, what I wanted to show you is to go in page um, five, six, and seven. And very quickly, you see that this, with these additional dollars, what we will hope to do, if we have a large amount of money coming to the district, because it may change based on who applies. So if that's the case, we really wanna focus on high dosage tutoring. And if you can see the next page, you see we're, we're talking, we met with our administrators, et cetera. And based on the data, reading interventionist, math interventionist, uh, after-school program, transportation to transport students who are after school or before school, uh, Saturday online school tutoring program, home books, hotspots, small class size, uh, the, the roadmap model that we have, as well as other programs to address the needs of specialized student services, et cetera. And also supplies and materials, um, mental health support, as well as tracking attendance uh, for our students who are online, et cetera. So it, it's a very comprehensive, please note that it's very similar to everything we've discussed. We're sticking to our plan, because it's a very comprehensive plan. This is what's in addition. Take a look. I don't wanna take too much time. What, what questions, my?
So for those who are in the public, because they're only seeing this first part, that's on the link. Because I'm just saying, they're only seeing this first part.
Well, I can go through it very quickly. Go through page two. These are the high dosage tutoring programs that we currently have at the district. We have uh, tier one support, which is our-
I'm just saying, what, where, where you showed the board on the second document, where can they see that? If they're in the public.
Uh, if you go there to the link, see the, the blue link right there, please link there, there. It opens our document. There's our academic plan for the district. And so just take a look, and if you have any questions, you could always email me.
I, I do have a question, Dr. Lopez. You said, how much was it per student?
So it's anywhere from thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents minimum. Uh, and this is checked by Jennifer Banks, who've been work, working with the M D, as well as as high as fifty dollars per student.
And we won't know until the application comes, and then they award us.
Any other board question? Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you for letting me do this today.
Thank you.
All the best. Fingers crossed we get it. Dr. Zachary Ross?
Thank you, Madam President. On Board of Education, as you know, in your M A S B field book, um, there is an opportunity for facilities update. And so um, as the Operations and Facilities Committee, you go deep into the work in terms of looking at facilities. This is a broad overview. So as Mr. Rose comes, he will provide a, a big, broad lens, looking at from the highlight of what's happening with the sinking fund into more of a funnel, closer view of um, what's going on with some of the projects, intimate projects, even in terms of like the pool, for example. And so he's coming in to show that um, that checkpoint in terms of, okay, Board, here's our checkpoint in terms of um, you're looking at the, the, the highlight of what's happening and in terms of your field book, look at facilities and operations. So thank you, Mr. Rose. There are lots of links, by the way, and it is available on the, on our website um, in terms of the board packet. And so here is Mr. Rose.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, and I can appreciate the camera view. I just always have the one in the back that caught the bald spot on the top of the I appreciate this view. Um, thanks again for being here. This is our, our annual uh, facilities update for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, I'm gonna start off focusing on um, some thank yous. Uh, thank you, big shout out to the community for uh, showing up at the ballot box and approving our sinking fund. Uh, it's a tremendous uh, opportunity that is afforded to the district over the next ten years um, to invest into our facilities. Um, and uh, as, as we've mentioned in all of our other presentations, um, get things uh, in place for the kids. Uh, there's some links here that tell you what's eligible under sinking fund, uh, as well as uh, some links to additional resources um, uh, as it relates to sinking fund. Few uh, notes here that are part of our uh, board updates on, on a weekly basis. We did add some additional categories to our sinking fund uh, recently. The electrical plumbing and technology infrastructure uh, will be moving forward for year four. So we'll talk more about that in our subcommittee meetings. Um, each category in the um, sinking fund, I'll briefly go over roofing updates. Um, for two thousand, uh, for the uh, year three, we added a roof, uh, roofing sections to Erickson at three hundred and twenty-five thousand uh, and roughly two hundred thousand for additional uh, roof maintenance across, or repairs, excuse me, across the district. Sinking fund life uh, safety updates, another category. Uh, year three, we invested about a hundred thousand dollars in fire suppression, um, mostly in a compliance uh, position along uh, as well as some, some updated repairs. Year four will have some additional repairs that needed to be made. Uh, in addition, many of our fireheads were topping, uh, hitting that fifty-year mark. And so those have to be, um, now, you can send them off and have them um, verified that they're still operational. And so we're in the process of doing that. Paving, um, we had some paving projects this summer. Those were year four. So Ford and Homes uh, received some beautiful new parking lots. Um, year three, we did uh, quite a bit of repairs, specifically transportation, will run complex, and a few repairs here at the high school. Year three, we did quite a bit of repairs, specifically transportation, Willerun Complex, and a few repairs here at the high school. HVAC upgrades. Year three, we did significant work to prepare Willerun Middle School for Grizzly Camp. So that was, that was a lot of work that was done there. And there was significant repairs past two years at FC High and Willerun Chillers during the startup season. So those are two things that we can talk more about in our subcommittee meetings as it relates to capital planning for those pieces of equipment. We also continue to support and engage in our two performance contracts with Train and Honeywell. In summarizing the sinking fund for year three, we expended about $2.9 million of our sinking fund. Major projects included roofing, HVAC, and technology. We had about a $1.2 million carryover, and we were able to achieve that a lot to do with the ESSR funds that was just mentioned by the auditor and how well we did with those funds. So appreciate Priya on that one. And so that carryover will help to support our change order for our high school pool, which demolition starts on the 17th. Any questions about sinking fund? Yes.
What's the timeline on the pool?
Update came out last week. The demo starts on the 17th of October, about a three-week demo is expected there. And then we begin reconstruction. So we're hoping for the spring of '23. Any other questions about sinking fund or projects related to sinking?
I just have a quick question. Is the sinking fund something that can be renewed?
Yes, it absolutely is. And I'm glad that you asked that because some of the signage that you see around the district where we where we give praise and thanks to the to the community is a part of setting that up so that as we approach the end of that 10-year cycle, that we have a plan to come back to our voters, explain or share with them along the way, all the things that we've been able to accomplish and things that we want to accomplish in years to come.
Okay, and we will be taking photos before and after so people can really see that.
Yeah, absolutely. Those photos are captured in our in our shared documents. And we have a lot of things that can add to that campaign. So I'm glad we're on accord with that.
We just keep, one of the things is we keep talking about HVAC, because people don't realize all of the HVAC work that happened even before the pandemic, the continued performance contract work. So when he's saying that, that's the continued work. We're continuing to monitor the air. That's when he's saying performance contact contract is continuing to happen. It's just not like, oh, he's done HVAC, it's forgotten. When he's saying that, it's continuing to monitor, continue to work on it. So every year, when he's talking about HVAC, it's the continuous monitoring of the air quality in those buildings. So I want to, that's what he just addressed. So people are keep asking about it, but it's happening continuously.
Yeah, and we're in a great position, having a sinking fund to fund the things that we that become aware of through our performance contracts. Before, a lot of things had to just kind of be buttoned up and taking care of in the immediate without a long-term longitudinal plan. So the funds make that possible. Moving forward with systems. Systems is how we approach things here in our department. So moving forward, I'm a systems thinker, and I believe that we've done a good job of bringing that mindset and that practice to our department here in facilities. One thing that we're really focusing on is performance indicators. How do we know that we're doing a good job? What is the, what is that metric? And what data do we have to prove that? Before, you know, I'd have to come just loaded with emotion, right, and ask for things that we knew deep down needed to be addressed, but I didn't have any data to support that. So as a district, and as a department, we've really been keyed in on data collection, right? And so you guys have afforded us through a budget, the opportunity to purchase School Dude, which helps us to track our assets and in talk about the things that we've invested in. And rather than just say, well, that piece of equipment, John back here has worked on it for three years in a row, and he keeps telling me that it needs to be replaced. And I come to you and say, hey, John says we need to replace this. We have data now to support that. So when we look at School Dude, it's a system, right? We have the collection of work orders that comes in from the end user that generates a work order going out. We have trackable data. We're in the process of having all of our equipment tagged. So there's a QR code on every piece of equipment in our district, which is an amazing task, you know, an amazing feat. But what does that do? It gives us data. It tells us how many times have we come to touch that piece of equipment? How much money have we invested? How many hours has John invested? All of that calculates into data that allows me to come to you with, you know, an informed decision, and informed purchases, and informed capital planning. That leads into the operations of our department. With those systems, I'm not a manager. I'm a leader, right? I don't have to manage the day-to-day operations. Our systems do that. So it gives me a chance to lift my head out from the ground and look up and look down, down the path, and then lead my team down that path. Without those systems, the day-to-day operations, I'm just a manager. And that's all that I'm able to do is to manage the day-to-day operations. And that's great when we have a great day of school each day, and everybody gets home safe, and the heat stays on, and everybody's comfortable. But that's just a day, right? And we're in it for the long haul. So that longitudinal aspect of what our department needs to be is key. The key to that is systems. So we collect that data. We're able to make informed decisions. We're a collaborative model. Weekly, Priya, myself, and Solomon sit down, and we look at what are we, where are we at? Where do we want to go? And how are we going to get there together? We're forward thinkers. We have dialogue that leads to discussion, and then we take action collectively with that informed data. And then lastly, from a facility standpoint, I did some disintegration and kind of broke down that really big 2013 TMP report. You'll notice in the folder that's linked here, it's broke down by building. So you can easily go to a building rather than scan through 2,000, 1,200 different pages to try to find the facility that you're looking for. The facilities comparison link, I presented that both at board and at subcommittee. That's going to, I believe, with this, with this presentation, bring a lot of data into one place. So when you have questions about facilities, going to this presentation and the embedded links is going to get you, I would be willing to bet, the data and information that you're looking for. The facilities comparison reports has information such as capacity of our buildings, age of our buildings, occupancy of our building, current occupancy, cost of operations broke down by student, by square foot on all three utilities as well. So lots of information in there that we will be using in collaboration, working together at our facilities and finance subcommittee levels. Couple other things just to lift are the capital planning documents that are also a part of this document. I failed to link. I'll link those in there. So the BTNs have got together, again, collaboration. We don't do this alone. Working with our principals and the BTNs for them to tell us what they need from their facilities so that our facilities are aligned with the mission and vision of each individual school. And then we just have some facilities that may be of particular interest in working together in the future as a facilities and finance subcommittee. Those are listed there. Remind us that we have 22 buildings that sit on 253 acres, not to mention some bullets there of other acreage that have been found recently to be owned by the district, 14 acres behind Ford and six acres on La Forge beside the Beatty School there. So add that to our 253 acres, 1.3 million square feet of usable space, not to mention all the tunnels and attic space and everything else. But that's, that's the district from a data standpoint, and the work that we do daily to make sure that our end users are comfortable and able to deliver good instruction. What questions might you have? I know there's a lot there to chew on and digest, and I know that that we work collectively together on a regular basis. And I saw this as a great resource for us to review and come in informed into those conversations at the subcommittee level. Any other questions?
I know I started with a lot of the Willerun schools, like Thurston and Kettering and all the schools.
Yeah.
And we said, are there still things like going on there? Do you still kind of go there? Do we still have, or are you just listing them as acres?
I'm glad that you mentioned that. Sorry to cut you off. The reason those are listed, those are buildings that we do not currently instruct. But are, were part of the consolidation came to us and are part of those 22 buildings. So we're going to be working together to decide what we're going to be doing.
Kettering is gone.
Yes.
I just have one, no, I just have one quick question. Our work order system in the district, is that still working well?
Yes.
It is?
Very well.
Okay, good.
Appreciate that. That's a system that manage, that I'm not, I don't manage, right? The system, you won't see me on my phone taking and stepping out of meetings. When I'm here, I'm present, and I know that the systems keep the district moving.
Perfect.
Appreciate you guys affording those, those resources to us, and they are definitely serving us well.
Excellent. Any other board question? Thank you, Mr. Rose.
All right. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Next, that takes us to our first public comment section for this evening. Ms. Haynes, are there any public comment cards that have come in? Thank you, Ms. Haynes. At this time, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam President, I moved that the Board of Education approved the September 26, 2022 Regular Board Meeting Minutes, and the personnel matters as per the presented list stated 10/6/22, new hires and resignations.
Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Gainesley. Is there support for this motion?
Madam President, Trustee feels I support.
Thank you. Supported by Trustee Fields. All those in favor? Those oppose? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to item nine, which is a discussion item, the Board of Education meeting calendar discussion. And at this time, we wanted to just have everyone take a look at the document that has our district scorecard calendar on it and see the proposed changes to the calendar that the Board is going to discuss and consider this evening. And just to kind of walk through it and summarize, on our calendar, what we are proposing is that our November meeting would move to the 7th, and our December meeting would move to the 12th. We're also proposing in that, that our meeting on October the 21st be canceled, 24th be canceled. It is the day after the Michigan Association of School Board Conference. And so in summary, we would have the meeting we're in tonight, one meeting in November and one in December. The meeting in December will be the Board Self-Assessment and the Superintendent Evaluation. The discussion portion for this part of the meeting is open. Are there comments from the Board? Do the dates and the changes? We know that we vote on this calendar in January of every year. So whenever we bring this back, and we need to make changes, we want to make sure we do that publicly, and we have an open discussion about any proposed changes to our calendar. So the floor is open for discussion. Trustee Shilman?
Thank you, Madam President. I am in favor of all of these moves. I have a question about the special meeting in December for Dr. Zachary Ross's evaluation and the Board Self-Assessment. Just wondering if that has to be on a different date other than Monday, if that could be one of those things that starts at 5:30 on December 12th?
I'm glad you asked. That meeting will be on December 12th. There will be not, there will not be an additional special meeting.
Oh, okay, because it says moving the December Board Meeting from the 5th to the 12th, adding another special meeting in December. So that's not, okay.
It was. And then before the meeting today, I was trying to see if that was something that could work for our consultant, something that could work for the superintendent, something that we could have on the 12th, what are our topics? But before we can do any of that, we have to consider the changes first, and then approve the changes, and then Dr. Zachary Ross and I can work together on moving whatever topics we need to move around. So I thought the exact same thing about the 12th and wondered if we could just, so is that correct, Dr. Zachary Ross, that the 12th does work?
Yes.
Okay.
And still was trying to verify with Mary, with the consent.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for raising that.
She did say, temporarily, but the
We have to consider.
Yeah.
Would that be okay for the rest of the board? Okay.
So the December 12th would be at 5:30 instead of 6:30 meeting, or it's a 6:30 meeting?
I don't see any reason why we need to meet at 6:30. Do you see any reason why we need to meet at 5:30?
She, her concern was just that she didn't want really to mix it. We've always mixed, the Board has always mixed it with something else. Her biggest concern was she just wanted it to be just the
Two topics.
The two topics. That was her main concern.
So if the Board approves the changes to the calendar, what we'll do is look at what the topics were, and we'll shift those topics to other meeting dates that we have.
Well, I'm in agreement with this. I'm fine. Because I really don't want October 24th, because that drive back was going to be
There's so many things on the calendar.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah, we looked at that, and we just, we, we know it's a lot. I mean, you know, being at an all-weekend conference and then coming back and then a board meeting. And we were trying to see what we could do to take those topics from the 24th off, move those to the 7th potentially, but we wanted to bring it all to you to say, you know, yes, this sounds good, or, you know, no, we want those dates to say the same.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah, good, good.
All right. Trustee Fields, you good too? All right. Excellent. So in summary, we will not have a meeting on October the 24th. Our meeting for November will be held on the 7th. And our meeting for December will be held on the 12th. So that means we have one meeting in November, one meeting in December, and the meeting on the 12th will be the self-assessment of the Board and the Superintendent Evaluation.
Can you do the dates again? I'm sorry, I'm cutting right in here.
The dates for the meeting will be, we won't have a meeting this month, on October 24th. Today's meeting will be our only meeting for October. Our meeting in November will be held on the 7th. And our December meeting will be held on the 12th, and that will be the Board Self-Assessment and the Superintendent Evaluation. Got them? Any other discussion? So it is the consensus of the Board that these dates that have been put forward for us to consider changing. We can go ahead and change these on the district calendar, on our scorecard calendar, and we'll go ahead and adjust the topics. So look out for maybe an updated email that has a shift in our Board Scorecard Calendar of topics. We'll try to get that out before our meeting in November. Next, that takes us to our first action item under Business and Finance, and that's our 2021-2022 Annual Financial Audit Report. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, Trustee Townsend, I moved that the Board of Education accepts the audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022, as audited by an independent firm, Yo and Yo.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Trustee Townsend. Is there support for this motion?
Madam President, Vice President Lee, support?
Thank you. Supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor?
Hi.
Those oppose? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to our second public comment portion for this Next, that takes us to our second public comment portion for this evening. Ms. Haynes, have any, uh, comment cards come in? Okay, thank you. Uh, next, that takes us to board superintendent comments. Are there any board comments at this time?
Madam President, Trustee Fields, just wanna comment that I went to the Homecoming game on Friday.
Yeah.
It was nice, me and Trustee Townsend. I did see President Hawkins there as well.
Yeah.
That was a, a nice event. Um, just think that we want to do some things different next year, but it was nice and it was beautiful. But just recommendations, you know, I missed the cars that we used to have, the convertos back in the day. I missed that, that process and, but it was nice, you know? Um, and also wanted to mention that, um, every now and then, and then MLive, and I have to talk to Julie about every time it comes up because I always look at the sports day, I always have a player of the week, but it's, but it's based on votes. So you can vote as many times as you want for your school. We have a player, he's been in there twice already. And I had reached out to, um, Jeremiah, so she can maybe put on our website, so we can vote for him, so he can get player, just nice representation, you know, for YCS. And, um, he's on there a second week, so that was a nice, you know, Jeremiah Woods, supported football, even though we, we're not winning a lot of games, but it's still to recognize our students, right, for that. And if anyone ever gets a chance, go on the website and vote for him. It'd be nice, you know, for him to maybe win that, but they pick someone every week from all the different districts. And this is the second time he's been on there, so I just think it's really nice if anybody get an opportunity to go on there and vote on MLive. You can vote as many times as well, you know, so it's, it's exciting for us to get recognized for something, and so our students to get recognized for things like that.
I'm sorry, is it going MLive to vote?
On MLive, and also I think, did she put on the website? I don't know. Every time I see it, I always call, if I see any of our plans get recognized or anything in the sports or anything like that, I always try to let the school know in case they don't see it or whatever, they don't. I always reach out to the school, but I just think it's always exciting to get recognition for that, for our players, for any, any other sport, but.
Aye. And that was Jeremiah Woods, who, is that what you said? The name of the student?
Oh, Jeremiah Woods.
Jeremiah Wood. Sophomore, okay. Well, congratulations to Jeremiah Wood.
Yeah, as a student to get Player of the Week, but you gotta keep voting, because it's like ten of them from every district. But this is the second time he's gotten it, so I'm just excited for that, for our school even thus recognizing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for lifting that up. Other board comment?
I'm going, Madam President. Um, Trustee Townsend and I were able to attend the MASB Region Seven Legislative Priority Setting Meeting on October third at WISD. A few of the things that the MASB team brought to us, uh, just that this is gonna be a consequential election year, um, because of redistricting. So we could have half new members in the House and a third new in the Senate. One of the things they might be considering, depending on, uh, timing, is the DeVosback Let My Kids Learn voucher ballot initiative. Um, they got their signatures not in time to be put on the ballot, but that was never their intent anyway. Um, if it's approved by the Board of Canvassers, they could have the opportunity, um, for the legislature to pass that initiative without the possibility of veto by the governor. So MASB is continuing to encourage districts to pass resolutions like the one we passed opposing this initiative and educating our legislators about its potential impacts. Um, some of the, that, there was a really great conversation. We had representatives from districts all over Region Seven. A few of the things that, that, um, were highlighted, that I highlighted in my notes were just the support for the need for equitable funding and just generally support for implementing the recommendations of the School Finance Research Collaborative. Um, where we've gotten with foundation grants is great, it's not equitable, um, and we need to make more progress there. We also recognize the inequitable and disruptive effects of, of having this competition among districts for limited teachers and staff. And to that end, we, we talked about the need for funding of, of increased across the board and equitable compensation models for teachers and staff along with increased pipeline opportunities. And Trustee Townsend, please feel free to add any big things you, I may have forgotten. There was a lot.
Yeah, I think you covered most of it, though. I also have a, um, report from the Washtenaw Area School Board. We did have our executive board meeting on October sixth, um, at the WISD, and then we had the actual board meeting afterwards. And so what we discussed, um, was along, again, with the legis, the previous meeting that, um, Trustee Goodrich is talking about is that we want to be a little bit more active or proactive in advocating for what all of the districts need within Washtenaw County. And so we're going to be rolling out the calendar for the legislative breakfasts. Um, Superintendent, I'm having a brain.
Norman.
Thank you. Norman is, um, just confirming some dates and to make sure that we have speakers there. Um, what we're looking to do is to have some more professional development geared around advocacy training for the districts. Um, we're also want to, uh, be proactive with, um, getting with our, um, people that go in and advocate for us in regards to budget and things like that. And so we're, and we're also going to do an overhaul of the bylaws, just to make sure that we're, um, have concrete bylaws. Because currently the bylaws do not state what each officer is responsible to do and those types of things, so we're gonna do an overhaul of that. Um, some of the things that we really want to target and advocate for, of course, is teacher shortages throughout the county as well as, um, enrollment and, uh, proper equity of funding. Um, so those are some things. Um, so I will be serving on that committee along with, um, a representative from Manchester and Lincoln Schools. Uh, but it was very good, um, well-attended, and anybody can attend those meetings. And, but they are going to be mainly in person, but I think some of them are going to be also, um, via Zoom. Um, the other thing, I did attend the Homecoming game, it was great, but I also spent this weekend celebrating my thirtieth class reunion, class nineteen ninety-two. Yes, yes, it was awesome. So we started, uh, with the tailgate. I want to thank, um, the Director of the Resiliency Center, Sharice Allen. Um, she has planned the annual, uh, tailgating. It went off without a hitch. It was very nice, well-attended. Um, I think we heard them more than the football game, but it was very nice. Then on Saturday, we had a big event, um, at the Kensington Court, very well-attended. And what was significant, and I'll be sharing pictures with everybody, is each of the tables, we talk about Principal Week and Principal Month and all of that. Each of the tables had a centerpiece that represented either a teacher, a principal, or some sort of leader, a coach in the school. And so the leaders that they represented was our principals, Mercedes Waddy, who unfortunately is, has passed. But she was the principal at West Middle School for several years, and then she was also at the high school. Um, Principal John Fulton, um, math teacher, Mr. Flowers, uh, Ms. Griffin, I believe she taught English, it was like. Uh, Coach Mick, who was over our state, we won several state awards, um, for our track team. And then, um, for the arts, we had Mr. Voss and Mr. Leach, who was still teaching currently at Pioneer. And then, of course, for social study, Ms. Hyman, who actually came to the event. She was with the district for forty years. Forty years. And so she was here right, I think, right when we were about to do the merger. So, um, but she, I mean, it was really nice. We also honored classmates who have passed. Um, but when I say it was well-attended, it was very well-attended. And, um, I'm, I was just very proud of the legacy that we continue to work. We have a lot of alumni who are in leadership, who are serving on other boards of education or running for Board of Education, and, um, just leaders within the community. So we're super excited. And one of our alumni, Amy McVeigh, teaches at Y. So she was there, we had a great time. But, um, just wanted to put that out there, but it's, it's the importance that we need to continue to do this type of work and be proactive, because we do have a strong legacy between the two districts. But one thing I did notice is that we kind of lost that, um, legacy part, where we didn't see a lot of people that graduated once, you know, right, uh, right when we were Phoenix, and then we switched to Grizzly. So we want to make, you know, we're talking, having conversations with the alumni so that we can bring those peoples in that graduated right when the merger happened up until now, so that they understand that the legacy is still strong. So, but thank you.
Other board comment? I have, oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry. Um, I just was, thank you, sorry. Um, I was going to ask if, um, so we're not gonna have another meeting before the election, and I know that we have a ballot initiative, um, and I, um, spend too much time on social media, but, um, so I just wanted to, I'm sure the district will, but like, I want to get the word out correctly and accurately. Is the district planning on putting something out on social media that can be shared sometime soon, do you know?
It's on there.
Is it already on there?
Yes, it's in the district newsletter.
In the, I was just gonna share a post, but yeah, I can, I can go. Thank you.
Sending a post about the Miller's renewal. Make sure we put it on social media as well, she's saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll need to keep blasting.
Yeah.
Putting it out, yeah. But we need to just keep blasting it out.
The absentee ballots are out now, so people are starting up.
It's in the newsletter, but probably just it being separate. Just separate, just keep sending. Thank you for the reminder.
So can I find out, where do we get those t-shirts? I saw a couple of t-shirts, we were talking about that.
Oh, the family reunion, the family. Opening day. If there's anything left, Julie. Because it was supposed to be the one of those.
And, um, Ms. Dillon, so she told us, and she was like, well, you guys didn't get one? I'm like, I didn't even know they existed, because I saw her with hers on, and they're really nice, so I didn't know how to get one.
Yeah, we had those for opening day. We had them for opening day.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yep. They're very nice, so get you one. Trustee Gainesley, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a, a super, uh, quick, um, bit of gratitude to, um, Dr. Hawkins and Dr. Zachary Ross. I was so glad to see those students here today. Um, having our students from homes, like, it had always been my absolute favorite part of the meeting. And, um, I'm just really glad that we have that back. So thank you so much for, for arranging that and making it happen.
Yes, yes. Well, that's a tough act to follow, so, you know, he's got the bar high. I was like, all right, standing room only, come on, homes, yeah. And I love their logo, no place like homes. I didn't even know that. I was like, that's new, so. Any other board comment? Um, I just wanted to mention two quick reminders. Um, I'm sure the district already knows this, and, and Dr. Zachary Ross probably has this in her updates this year as well. But, uh, Infinite Scholars, um, will be at Eastern Michigan University tomorrow. I know that they've sent information out to districts, uh, in the area. It's an event that's typically hosted, um, in conjunction with the university, the Capella, Jack and Jill. Um, but that is an event where, uh, scholars can come, they can apply for admissions to colleges and universities on the spot. They can bring their essays, their resumes, um, they can apply for scholarships right on the spot. And I know that many of our counselors across the district already have that information. And then the, uh, second thing I wanted to mention was the Washtenaw County Commissioners and Judicial Candidates Forum. That's going to be held from six to eight on Thursday at the LRC Building. Um, and I believe there is a candidate forum tomorrow at EMU, maybe?
Well, yeah.
It's not a, it's not a candidate forum. It's a, um, town hall.
Town hall.
Yeah, they're not saying it's a candidate.
Oh.
But it's a town hall.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be there anymore. I think you might be the board member that, because then I got an email, they were like, oh, we have one board member already. So I think it's, yeah, I was all confused.
It's not yet.
Okay, they call it a town hall. Okay, so that's, that's tomorrow evening. Trustee Townsend, what time?
Um, I want to say it's at six, six, six or six-thirty, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's more so focusing on, uh, voting and then, uh, my ordinance, Beta Phi Beta, they're working with Black Voters Matters. They'll be something early in their day, and they're trying to advocate for more people to register to vote. But I'll, um, email you the information.
Okay, perfect. Um, and yes, I'll just echo what was already said about Homecoming. It was a very nice, uh, event. It was well-attended, the home, the football game. Um, I was walking up, and as Trustee Townsend said, yes, the tailgating was everything. I was dancing on the way to the stands. It was very, it was lovely. So, uh, very, very nice turnout. Um, and that's all I have. Dr. Zachary Ross?
Thank you, Madam President. I will echo the homecoming, um, not only just getting there, but just the pep assembly. We got to think about, we have a whole new, basically, high school administration and staff. And that group put that students together, the staff rallied the staff, and what they had to do when you bring them together, folks. The AD is new, the principal, assistant principal, and to pull off something in the first quarter of a year. We got to give them accolades for what they did with the staff, with the students. That's a feat when you're a new full administration, including the AD. So I want to give them accolades for what they did, how they put everybody together, because people tried to say what they weren't gonna do. But they show what they, and a new band director, and a new band director. And the pictures, you could see the pictures of what the band did, what the cheerleaders did, what the administration, what the, what they did with that pep assembly. I just really am proud, what they did with the dance, what they did on the field. They just need to be credited, because it could have just not happened. When you have a new principal, all new APs and a new AD, it could have not come through. And it came through and it looked wonderful, and they pulled it off without a hitch. And people didn't realize it's all new folks up in there. And so I just really give them credit. The whole district has Spirit Week. It, it don't matter what school you went to. It was Spirit Week, Spirit Week, Spirit Week in all the buildings. And we had two new, because I'm saying the high school. Also, when you went to A's, it was Spirit Week all week there, too. Every building, Spirit Week, Spirit Week, Spirit Week. And so I appreciate when we say, um, National Principals Week, it ought to be, because you saw it across the district. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, we keep saying it with what the Custodian Day, also, we see that transportation, the Ypsilanti District Library, um, the new, the library transition, the support that has been happening with that transition from the, i- in Superior Township. The support that our staff has been doing, um, to support that library transitioning with our, our transportation department, working with them to transition that library over, and Erin Rose and his staff. Thank you, Erin. And thank you, Transportation Department. They've been volunteering, saying, what can we do to help you on a Saturday to support them? Thank you to Transportation Department. Thank you to Erin for that work. Um, because that's, uh, yes, the district is supporting, and yes, we're saying we're being partners, and we pay for some overtime. But again, that's some sacrifice, because that's the day, Saturday. So thank you to our transportation staff. Thank you to Mr. Rose and your staff, because that's above and beyond to be partners. And then folks said, well, what else can you do? We like, what else? Like, providing the folks on Saturday. Thank you to, uh, Ypsilanti Community School Staff for supporting the library, to making sure that transition happens for the library over there. Um, I'm excited as well, because we received information from our Ypsilanti Youth Orchestra. Because again, people see us just inside, but outside, the, the, the increase at, they've been really working, because we said, what else can we do to partner beyond? The Ypsilanti Youth Orchestra registration, they said that, um, we've been really saying, we want to make sure we build outside to improve. The increase in the orchestra this year was a nine-hundred percent increase. Nine-hundred percent increase by us intentionally partnering with the YYO this year. So again, thank you, YCS, because when they increase, it builds up the capacity of our students. And we understand what music intelligence does, and so they wanted to us, for us to acknowledge the work and the partnership and to say thank you, because some of you, um, supported, some of you pushed. They worked at, they came back to School Bash and made sure that our students got involved in the program. They got a nine-hundred percent increase. And so they were just so thankful for what we did. And last but not least, now that the board has said November seventh, we got approval that Cognia will come and do the recognition on November seventh. So we will be bringing everybody, press releases, everybody who participated. So for the achievements then and awards, they'll come and bring the plaque for the Systems of Distinction, um, for the achievements and awards part. And they said they will, um, come and bring that international award, um, if we did have the, uh, November seventh meeting. They were excited. They said, if the board choose. They said, if the board chooses November 7th, we want to come right away and bring that, bring the national, the international recognition. So they said if the board decided on that date, they wanted to bring the very next meeting. So they want to come on November 7th. So we're, we'll bring, we're saying, we'll tell M Live and everybody to come on out. And those who participated at the beginning of the meeting, so November 7th, we'll let them know. They said they got the plaques and everything. So we'll let them know, November 7th, Cognia will be here during the achievement section to bring, to, to give the district the award for the Systems of Distinction. So November 7th, they will be here. So I'm really excited that we can tell them that that will be the day, that they will present the district the Systems of Distinction Award. And that is something, again, collaboratively, that everyone participated, everyone worked together to, to receive that honor. And I'm just excited that they'll be able to come on that day so that persons can see that it's not individually, this is a collective work. And they'll be able to feel that, especially this time of year, because it can be where you're feeling worn and tired. And so that might be an inspiration to our staff for the work that they put in. November 7th achievement.
All right, that worked out well. Just three quick things that I wanted to, to mention. And Dr. Zachary Ross, and I'll go maybe in the reverse order for the three things that I had listed. I know that we had a beloved ISD secretary. Do you want to say?
Yes, and I've had the wrong name of her, Sandy Wilkinson. She, many of you, when you walk in, you see Sandy. She, unfortunately, she passed on at the, the day of the MASB on Monday. And so there are opportunities to give cards, to express acknowledgement. I sent the email just today. And there will be a service, but there's also a day that you can go and to, to celebrate her life. So the email is there. However, if you'd like to express your words, there's an opportunity for you to just to send an email. Her daughter is, is, is a person who has received services through the ISD. So she will be reading, they'll be reading those with her. And so any expressions, many persons have gone and seen her at the receptionist desk. And so if you'd like to express those, those words to Sandy's, Sandy's granddaughter or the ISD staff, would really appreciate those things.
Thank you, Dr. Zachary Ross. And I know this board collectively, you know, we send our condolences to everyone at the ISD and to the family during this difficult time. And I won't say any more than what I'm going to say about this, is just that, as you were speaking about principals and just the leadership and Friday was the homecoming and all the festivities. And Dr. Hugan experienced a tremendous loss of, of two people in her family that were very close to her. And so when you said that, it just made me think of the burden and how much our teachers, our administrators carry with them. And she was there on Friday. She was there. And, and I can't imagine what, how heavy it is on her. But I know that this board, and certainly this entire district and community, gives her our support and our love and our condolences, because that's a lot to deal with in a week.
Yes.
And lastly, thank you, board, for considering the date changes.
Thank you.
The time is 8:07. We are adjourned.